Hulu, Netflix, Peacock, Amazon Prime, Disney Plus. Streaming media services change not only people's viewing habits, but also change the dynamics facing WCTV. Content is tailored to specific viewer interests, which for the viewer is a good thing. It allows people to cut the cord and eliminate programming they neither watch or need. An unforeseen consequence is that it impacts WCTV in a very challenging and costly way.
WCTV is funded almost entirely by a percentage of cable company's revenues based off the amount of cable subscribers we have in Wilmington. In short, less cable subscribers equals less revenue for WCTV. If you utilize any of WCTV's resources by creating your own program or watching local meetings and sports online and you are not a cable subscriber, there is a way to help. I hope you will consider making a donation so that we can continue delivering these programs and more to you. For those of you who have made a donation, I thank you. We do receive these and we are very appreciative.
Everyone is in attendance. Melissa Plowman is on the phone. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forgot my welcome. Good evening and welcome to the October 13th, 2021 school committee meeting. Next up on our agenda, we have our student representative from the high school, Angela Champa. Thanks for being here. Again, two meetings in a row.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Hello, my name's Angela Champa. I was here at the last meeting, but I'm a senior from Wilmington High School and I'm the high school representative for the school committee meeting. We've been off to a great start this year. Students are getting well adjusted into their schedule now that we're over a month in and students are excited to be back full time for the first time in a while. The newest adjustment we've had to face is the new structure of W-2. It's definitely been more of an adjustment for the seniors than the younger grades as they haven't had the normal structure as long. But the first 40 minutes is now used for class meetings, advisory, counselor meetings, or any other events students might need while they stay stationary in their W-2. For freshmen, sophomore, juniors, this time has been used to work a lot on the vision of the graduate, which you guys will hear about today. And for seniors, this has been used for different seminars with their guidance counselor. They can attend virtually for different things like how to apply to college, how to know what way of applying is best for you, which has been really helpful to seniors and everyone's getting something out of this time. So during the second half of W-2, students can use this 40 minutes for academic learning. It's basically the way it was before where students can go see teachers. They can work on anything they need and students have been adjusting to this really well. Seniors use this time super productively. I've noticed especially with college deadlines coming up. So W-2's also been used for students to have meetings trying to help create a really productive environment for everyone. For example, all the class officers for all grades have been meeting with Ms. Peters every other week during a W-2 for the last 40 minutes during our academic time. And we've been using this time to come up with different ways to increase school morale and create a more positive environment. So we have been supporting teams during their breast cancer awareness games. You may have seen some of the balloons in the lobby and students have really liked those. The freshmen just elected their class officers this past week and we all got to meet them today, which was very exciting. So we're excited to work with them. For the month of October, sports teams have been hosting their breast cancer awareness or Dig Pink games. Football and cheerleading held theirs on October 1st and it was very successful. And field hockey had theirs this past Monday, October 11th. Girls soccer's Dig Pink game will be on October 22nd. This week at WHS is homecoming week and students are very excited, lots of school spirit. The schedule is volleyball was Tuesday at 5:30 PM. Wednesday, right now is girls soccer game. It's also their senior night, so hopefully they're winning. Thursday is field hockey at 6:00 PM. Friday, the football games at 6:00 PM. And Saturday, boys soccer will close out homecoming week at 3:00 PM. So the theme for all the games is blue and white. Students have been showing their spirit a lot. And then for football, the theme's going to be whiteout. Students have been using the themes a lot to show their school spirit. Everyone's been participating and it's great to see the student section so united. So this Friday is not only our homecoming football game, but it's also senior night for the band, the cheerleaders, and the football game. So we're very excited to see the turnout there. A great representation of our school spirit was exhibited at the football game this past, on October 1st. The band was seated next to the student section for the first time. Usually the student section's on one side of the bleachers and the band's on the entire other side. So it was really nice to have the student section, the band, and the cheerleaders all together and have our football team enter from that side. Everyone was so supportive of each other. They were doing cheers together and it was just great to have everyone there. And even have Mr. Miranda, Mr. Phillips, and Ms. Peters out in front. So it was like the whole school was there in a way. So students are always getting involved at the high school. And this week, they're going to be helping out at the eighth grade open house taking place this Thursday. Students from different groups such as National Honor Society and the Peer Mentor Program are going to be leading tours. For eighth graders and other students have volunteered to present, share about their student perspective of the high school, as well as to talk with curriculum teachers and give presentations so the eighth graders know what kind of courses they could take at the high school. Sorry, my papers are stuck together. So Wilmington High School students are also amazing when it comes to community service. It's a graduation requirement, but a lot of kids go above and beyond. There are clubs such as Rotary Interact and WHS which have been meeting regularly to give students opportunities on ways to complete their community service and stay active in the community. Juniors and seniors have the opportunity to take a service learning class, which they do a fall semester-long service project. And this year, there are a lot of interesting projects going on. Everyone's made their full proposals, so those are going to be starting. There's a drive for letters to the senior citizen homes in Wilmington. There's three of them. And there's also a project to create a cheerleading event for students with disabilities. So these are all kids in our community who are working on projects all semester that I'll keep you updated on as we see them complete. And also in classes, students have been enjoying a lot of their classes. Everyone's very motivated, especially in English classes this year. Freshmen have started reading Romeo and Juliet, which is a good way to start off their year. They're all very interested in the story. And our AP literature class just finished their first book, Never Let Me Go, which students could be seen reading at lunch and talking with Mr. Phillips about as he read it. So that was very fun. And for fundraisers coming up, on Sat-, this Saturday, October 16th, our DECA chapter is hosting a fundraiser at Chipotle from 4:00 to 8:00. If anyone likes Chipotle, should definitely stop by. So thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you so much, Angela.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Mrs. Burns.
I just, what a very, I have to say, I'm very grateful for your detailed presentation of everything that's happening on. It was one of the most, it just, how do I put it? I'm trying to articulate it into words. I am grateful for the detail and just the insight of these events within our student community and how wonderful that they've taken to certain transitions in school spirit.
Thank you.
But thank you for presenting this evening.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you so much for being here. We always appreciate it. It's good to see you. Our next item of business is public comment. Mr. Ragsdale.
All right. So the only person we have signed up for a public comment tonight, Jeffrey Cohen.
Jeffrey Cohen, 18 Cobalt Street in Wilmington. Good evening. If critical race theory was not being taught in Wilmington schools, then why is the nation's second largest teachers' union, the National Education Association, come out strongly defending it? During the NEA's 2021 summer conference, they approved something called the New Business Item 39. The following comes directly from the National Education Association's website. The NEA will quote, "Share and publicize through existing channels information already available on critical race theory. CRT, what it is and what it is not. Have a team of staffers for members who want to learn more and fight back against anti-CRT rhetoric," end quote. The NEA goes on to say, quote, "Provide an already created in-depth study that critiques empire, white supremacy, anti-blackness, indigeneity, racism, patriarchy, cis hetero-patriarchy, capitalism, ableism, anthropocentrism, and other forms of power and oppression, the intersections of our society, and that we oppose attempts to ban critical race theory in the 1619 Project," end quote. Let me repeat the last line, quote, "We oppose attempts to ban critical race theory," end quote. Why would the nation's second largest teachers' union oppose attempts to ban CRT if it didn't exist in our schools? Perhaps equally important is why did they erase all the records of New Business Item 39 from their website? Fortunately, there's a web archive and I have copies. So if you need copies, chairman, chairwoman, I'll be happy to provide them.
Thank you very much.
I have, excuse me, I have more from the National Education Association, New Business Item 39. The NEA goes on to state, quote, "It is reasonable and appropriate for curriculum to be informed by academic frameworks for understanding and interpreting the impact of the past and on current society, including critical race theory." Perhaps most importantly, the NEA's New Business Item 39 goes on to say that they, that they will quote, "Commit President Becky Pringle to make public statements across all lines of media that support critical, excuse me, that support racial honesty in education, including but not limited to critical race theory." If CRT is not being taught in our schools, why have they gone to such great detail, not only to protect it, but to promote it using their president? I thought schools were only supposed to teach English, math, science, history, and other subjects. When was the last time academic achievement or academic elect-, excuse me, when was the last time academic excellence or student recognition was discussed in this room? Wilmington needs an immediate return to real education and away from this destructive social justice platform that damages children. You can call it whatever you want, like diversity, equity, and inclusion, but that doesn't change the fact that CRT and diversity, equity, and inclusion are interchangeable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Barb Baldwin and I'm at 1 Leonard Lane. I don't actually have prepared comments, but I have been watching the school committee meetings over the past few weeks. I have heard a lot of information from this gentleman in his response and I feel compelled to say that I'm interested in understanding, like who has built the academic frameworks? Who has been involved? Who's been talking and deciding about what history we share in our classrooms? And I am very concerned that there were people not at the table in those conversations and that we radically need to think about education as a vehicle to expand and think about inclusion and thinking about who, what stories we tell. And so I just want to comment that I'm in favor of really examining the curriculum and making sure that we are providing kids with a full and complete education that includes narratives that are not the ones that have historically been told. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we have some approval of items by consensus. Approval of minute, September 22nd, 2021. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Second, Mrs. Newhouse, all in favor. That is...
Melissa? Yes.
Unanimous. We have warrants G-0809, R-07, L-0809, 10, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, FS-1920 and 22. Is there a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, second by Mr. Fenely, all in favor?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you. We have payroll ending 9/29/2021 and 10/13/2021. Mr. Ragsdale, thank you, Mr. Samaha, all in favor?
Yes.
That's unanimous. And we have warrants Fed-03 and 05. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor?
Yes.
That's, thank you. That's unanimous. I'm Jada June.
I am.
Thank you. You got that? Thank you. All right. Our next item of business is the superintendent's report, Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. There are a few items tonight that are included in the packet informationally, but also the first one that is not. And I'll just provide a brief update to members of the committee on broadly speaking around Department of Education updates and student health and safety related. Just to recap where we are at, I know that it's, certainly we can anticipate that it will gather more attention within the media and I think it already has as we, as we start this week around where some schools may be headed in terms of the mask mandate. On Monday, September 27th, just as a reminder to our committee and our community, the Department of Education did announce that the mask requirement for indoor, indoor activity within our schools throughout the Commonwealth would be extended until at least November 1st. However, also included in that communication was that as of October the 15th, if 80% of the students and 80% of the staff within a particular school achieve a vaccination rate of 80%, then those staff and those students who are fully vaccinated no longer need to wear masks. Now, I will say that that requirement though also requires an attestation with the Department of Education on behalf of the school and/or the district. As, as of this morning, our vaccination rate of our middle school, so we're really talking about, of course, just to put this into focus, two schools in our district, the middle school and the high school, based upon the eligibility for vaccinations of our student body of age in those two schools. As of this morning, the middle school vaccination rate of students is 39% of the students who are currently enrolled. As of this morning, the middle school staff vaccination rates is 80% in the middle school. In the high school, our student body currently sits at 71%. And our high school staff currently sits at 76%. So I thought that there may be some interest in terms of where we, where we stand. It will likely be the case that we will hear about other schools and other school districts that may be moving in the direction of repealing or taking the off-ramp, if you will. That term's been used to remove masks, but at this point in time, certainly Wilmington, unless something changes with the Department of Education, we are holding steady with the mask mandate and we will certainly keep the committee and the community informed should any other additional changes be forthcoming from the Department of Education. With all of that said though, I'm pleased to be able to say that we are, we are continuing to see very low positive rates or counts throughout our district. We are maintaining the COVID-19 dashboard that is on the district website again. And so you can see as a member of the community, truly a real-time tracker of where our positive rates stand, our positive numbers stand, as well as those that have been identified as a close contact. But a huge shout out and great credit goes to our students who are doing a great job overall throughout our school, our staff who are working hard to support those, and our families behind the scenes that I know are encouraging students to, to, to do the right thing. And so thank you to everyone. And you know, I think it's, it's a testament to the efforts that we have in place that we're also seeing those low vacs and, or those low positive numbers. So that's really it. There's nothing else further right now related to health and safety. But certainly I'll pause there if there are any questions that members of the committee may have.
Mr. Ragsdale.
Just a quick comment on something that you said, but I wanted to really emphasize, which is that even if school hits the 80% threshold for vaccination, that so-called off-ramp is only for vaccinated students. And that there is currently no off-ramp being, being proposed from DESI for unvaccinated students. So they, under, under the current mandate, that is continuing without, the unvaccinated students will have to continue to wear masks, even if the 80% threshold is reached until, of course, DESI issues new guidance.
Thank you. Mr. Fenely and then Mrs. Burns.
Just a clarifying question to make sure I understand, Dr. Brand. Is it 80% of staff and students or staff or students? Does it have to be an 80% essentially total population of the building?
The understanding is both groups.
Okay.
Yes.
Mrs. Burns.
So I ask this. For those students who may not be vaccinated and, and/or who may not be able to, for sensory reasons or whatnot, be able to wear a mask, how have we prepared or what has been discussed preliminarily even to protect those students that might run a higher risk within our school buildings?
So we had that reality even as far back as last year with some students who, for various reasons, were unable to wear a mask. And so those are handled and those continue to be handled within our school, school buildings on a one-on-one basis with the school nurse and to make respective accommodations within, for that child and within their, their, their specific environments. And that continues.
Only because the caveat though too is that if we move ahead with, with this recommendation from DESI, you know, we meet those targets. You know, the difference is, is we had everyone masked as opposed to now we, only, only the unvaccinated are masked, which still runs a risk to those who may not be able to wear a mask, who may be unvaccinated for medical reasons. And although you're vaccinated and you know that, you can still be a carrier. So you, and those who are unvaccinated do run a higher risk of picking it up. Do you know what I mean? And so that's, that's where I, I'm open to moving forward because I want, I would like normalcy as well. But I, I want to do it at great thought in factoring all of our student population in this capacity. That's, I think where I, you know, I just want to make sure that school is accessible and safe for all. So, thank you.
Shifting gears significantly to a different topic, cite item 6B. In, in your packet and of course for members of our community to draw attention, there is a, a new, newly designed, if you will, performing arts calendar. And thank you to Anita who put this together. Just a different view in a more consolidated way. And I just thought I would bring attention to, for the committee and our community to this nice overview of all of the, as of, as of this moment, the planned events, related events under the Performing Arts Department for the entire school year. I don't know if this has been broadly socialized yet, but it certainly will be if it hasn't for all of our families. But a quick and easy glance, a quick glance of all of the things planned, the dates and locations and so on. So a good news item to share with you and, and members of our community. Item 6C, MCAS results. So I'll, I'll turn the, at this time, over to Ms. Elliott, who's going to, who's going to take you through an update as the Department of Education's MCAS results from the last spring have now just recently been released. And she has been incredibly hard at work pulling together the results and will provide you with a broad overview of where we stand and a little bit of a deeper dive, not too deep, but a little bit of a deeper dive in terms of MCAS.
Shall I dive in the deep end?
Yes, right.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I will begin with, as I started to look at this data, I thought about three different questions that I was asking myself that I wanted to be able to share out. First, how did we do in comparison to prior years? So what was the impact of the last 18 months on our students' MCAS scores? How did we do in comparison with other districts in this past, during this past year? And what are areas of focus for us and a plan for improvement going forward? So those are the three overarching questions that I focused on. So to begin, these next set of slides will really look at the grade level scores. And I'm looking at them over time at this point. I'd like to point out here as I go through this that when you, what you're seeing here on this chart, you're seeing the, the years. We had 2017, 2018, 2019, no data for 2020. We didn't administer the assessment in 2020. And then the current 2021. So you can see here in blue, those are the students who scored exceeding expectations. Green is meeting, yeah, orange is partially meeting expectations and red is not meeting expectations. So I've sort of, so you'll see this for every grade level, English Language Arts and Math and Science for those grades that administer the science exam. And you can see down the bottom, I've sort of done a little synopsis of what the slide is showing us overall from my perspective. So I'd like to remind you though that we're looking at third grade students over four-year span. So those are all different students each year. So it's a different cohort of third graders that are coming through the third grade. So this is a really good measure of our curriculum. This isn't looking at specific student information, but overall our programming and our instruction in our curriculum. So here we're seeing steady improvement actually in our third grade ELA with no real obvious impact overall from last year. We actually grew in our English Language Arts in third grade last year. You're going to see this trend at a lot of our elementary grades for the ELA. And I, I, I think that nationally, if you look across the country, most districts held stable with ELA or close to stable or there was a less of an impact in ELA, but it was math that really took the biggest hit over the last 18 months. For lots of reasons, I'm sure, but you know, I think people were pleasantly surprised that ELA students were doing, holding their own. Math, I think the, the lack of hands-on manipulatives when students were remote or hybrid, the level of independent work they needed to do and not have that guided practice definitely had an impact in math. So our third grade ELA scores are looking, you know, showing positive growth. And here's the math for third grade. Oops, that didn't change on your screen. So for math in third grade, you can see that there's been a slight, a steady but slight decline. And then the decline jumped a little bit more in 21, the impact from the pandemic. This pattern, we're going to see it in the elementary grades as well in math, a very steady, slow decline in our scores. This actually, you know, from looking at this data over time, I, I am not, I'm not surprised. This is exactly where I was in my former district before I came here, watching the numbers start to decline when you roll out a new program. Over time, you need to recycle all the professional development. We have a lot of new staff that have come in. We've been emphasizing literacy PD for the last several years and it's paid off. We're, I think we're doing well. We're definitely showing growth with literacy. We have a lot of new staff that haven't had the formal training around this math program. And so I think that we need to bring that back around for many of our staff members. But also in addition to that, I'll talk about it when we get there, but we have, this year, we've updated our version of our math program for the elementary grades, which brings it really in line with the frameworks now. So we'll talk more about that later. Grade four English Language Arts, you can see the growth continuing to steadily climb. And 21 is still pretty solid. And grade four math, again, you see, although 17, 18, 19 was looking pretty stable, but we did see a pretty big impact in 21 in fourth grade math. So that was definitely a negative for kids moving from meeting to partially meeting. Grade five ELA scores showed improvement in 17 and 18. They declined in 19, but they actually rebounded in 21. So it doesn't seem, so that's most likely a particular cohort of students. It doesn't seem that there's really any nega-, you know, strong impact from the pandemic on the MCAS scores, I should say only. I mean, we're, I want to remind everyone that we're looking at one data point, one point in time and that these MCAS administration at the elementary grades are not your typical administration. They're much shorter versions of the test as well. So we don't, students may not have the same opportunity to answer as many questions on a particular topic. So that can have an impact on the overall results. Grade five math scores show some variability over time, but are relatively stable. It appears that there was definitely an impact. You can see the scores in 21, the number of students who went to partially meeting definitely jumped up. And grade five science, so we only have two years of data because we switched to a new version of the assessment in 2019. So you're just looking at 2019 and 2021. Not a significant change from those two years, which I actually would have anticipated there would have been a much greater drop. The nature of how we taught science in the last 18 months was very different. We didn't, we weren't, even when we were in person, we weren't sharing materials. So we could hit, students couldn't really do hands-on labs in the same way. They were doing lots of virtual labs and watching lots of videos and reading a lot about science, but they really weren't able to have the hands-on experience. So I was actually pretty surprised and grateful that our grade five scores held. You know, consist, relatively consistent, given that it's one of, probably one of the harder subjects to really maintain when your kids are remote. English Language Arts at the sixth grade level. So we are looking at a steady decline over time and definitely a negative. So we are looking at a steady decline over time and definitely a negative impact from the pandemic for ELA. Um, if grade six ELA, so it's definitely an area that we're going to need to, to do some work and focus on and dig deeper to figure out what's going on. We've already started some of that work and I'll explain shortly. Grade six math, scores are relatively stable over time, but it appears there really was a definite impact from, um, the pandemic. Um, and when you look at, you know, first glance, if you look at 19, it looks as if the numbers are declining in the green in 19, but if you take a look over at the exceeding, the number of students that jumped up in exceeding really account for that drop in the green and the meeting column for 2019. So, um, you know, they were relatively stable, um, but this was definitely an impact this past year. Grade seven English Language Arts, um, scores are relatively stable. There was definitely, you know, some impact with 21, uh, not as profound as, um, the math. This was important too. This was the lowest participation rate we had was grade seven. I think just this ELA, that might've been one other subtest. We only had 90% participation rate, um, and usually it's higher. I don't know if that really, the impact that has on our overall performance and scores, but, um, just wanted to make note of that. Grade seven math, um, scores actually show improvement over time in grade seven math. But last year, you know, it was definitely an impact. Oh, and the participation rate was low again, 90% for seventh grade. Grade eight ELA, scores are relatively stable over time, but you can see the impact from last year. And then grade eight math, um, again, pretty, this is actually steadily improving over time. If you look at the number of exceeding students in 17 and 18 and 19, it's been growing, um, which is good, but you can see the, the, uh, impact from 21. Grade eight science and tech engineering. So we, again, we only have two years of data here because we switched to the new version of the test. So, um, we're looking at 2019 and 2021. So, you know, we do see a drop in 2021, but as I mentioned before, I honestly would have expected it to be a little bit more significant, significant of a drop. So, um, overall, that, you know, was, I think, better than I anticipated based on the content area. Grade 10 English Language Arts, again, two years of data because we switched versions of the assessment. This really shows growth, um, that our students are doing well in the English Language Arts at the 10th grade level. And we didn't see any major negative impacts from last year. So that was good news. In grade 10 math, um, same thing, two years worth of data. Pretty stable over time and not any significant change, um, from last year in math. Grade nine biology, um, you're seeing a different color coding system because this is the, uh, legacy version, the older test, um, that still, we're still using for biology. So here I've indicated with that, um, arrow, you can really see, so the blue here is advanced and the light blue is proficient. So you can see that the, really the biggest impact here is that many of our advanced students just moved into the proficient category here, um, in 2021, um, which I think makes sense. So at least they're still proficient, but you obviously, um, have a deeper knowledge and understanding when you're able to really experience science hands-on and, and do those different types of experiments. This is our grade nine introductory physics, um, scores. You know, 18 and 19 was pretty stable, but we definitely saw a decline in 21. And so that was the overall, um, scores comparing them against ourself over the last four or five years. This next section is really how do we compare, so, uh, to other districts? So in order to, um, really do, um, a comparison that is, I guess, apples to apples, Desi provides districts with access to their DART tool, which allows us to identify districts that we are similar to based on two different criteria. The first being student demographics and the second, um, being personal income and property value within the community. So they recommend when we're looking at specific data that we use comparable districts to do so. However, all over the website this year, it does give warning that, um, you know, please use this data cautiously this year, knowing that, um, the, the systems and structures in place and how the models for education in districts varied so significantly over the last year and a half with, um, the impact from the pandemic. So what might normally be considered apples to apples may not be as accurate right now. But, um, you know, we've looked at different communities for comparison for multiple different reasons. Um, and, and this data actually is recalibrated every October, I believe. Um, so that the new communities that are, we're being compared to are updated, um, in October. So, um, right now, that, based on those two criteria, that we are looking, um, at Easton, Hanover, Long Meadow, Marshfield and Neshoba as being the most similar to Wilmington, based on those criteria. So here you'll just see I, I have side-by-side grade three ELA, grade three math. You can see where Wilmington ranks. Um, we've categorized these by exceeding and meeting in the first, they're combined in the first column. Partially meeting in the middle, not meeting on the right. And I highlighted Wilmington in blue and the state, it's yellow, but it's hard to see on the screen. So you can just see where we fall within those comparison communities. This is grade four ELA and math. Grade five. Grade six, oh, I'm sorry, grade five science and technology engineering. Grade six, ELA and math. Grade seven. Grade eight. Eight, science, tech and engineering. And grade 10 ELA and math. So, uh, definitely gives a different perspective, you know, uh, hard to, um, make any assumptions given, um, the year we're coming off of. Um, so it really would, we would need to really look long-term at different communities as well to get a comparison. But, um, I think it's helpful to see, even though we're showing growth in some grade levels and in some areas, uh, we still may be on the lower end, um, compared to other similar communities. And sometimes we're in the middle as well. So at this point, it, um, I really wanted to just share with you, you know, the areas that I think we are showing growth, um, what are our focus areas moving forward and our plans for improvement. So, uh, really I wanted to look at the three different, um, content areas. So English Language Arts, as I pointed out, we've, we've shown steady growth over time in grades three, four, five and 10, um, with really minimal or no impact from 2021 that was apparent from the data that we saw. In math, um, grade 10 math shows growth over time and not a significant impact in this past year. Steady, we've also seen steady growth over time in math in grade seven and eight. However, we did see a, uh, pretty strong impact last year in math in those grades. And grade five science scores remain relatively stable, even given the pandemic with minimal opportunity for hands-on instruction. So those are some areas that I think we, we're, we, um, you know, saw some success. And, but our plan for improvement, um, I, I'd like to point out though, that, um, these plans for improvement are not plans that are reactionary to specific data that we just gleaned from MCAS. These are plans that, um, you know, we, we certainly are not surprised. We were pleasantly surprised in some ways, but certainly we're not surprised in thinking that our students would have, um, excelled given the last 18 months in, in every area. So we certainly are aware that we need to do as much as we possibly can to determine where students are, uh, assess their needs and provide remediation to support them. So most of these plans were well underway before this data was released. So I'll just highlight what we're focusing on for English Language Arts. Universal screening, progress monitoring and data meetings in grades K through five. Uh, I've actually spent the last two days in, uh, West Intermediate School with the fifth grade and fourth grade teams for, um, six-hour data meetings, going through all of the students', um, universal screening data that we've been collecting, they're looking at their MCAS scores, getting teacher input about their performance and, um, really developing intervention plans, identifying which students need what and figuring out how we're going to deliver those services. So we've just launched these meetings, but they are, um, we are going straight through for the next, um, this week and next week to, um, to make sure that we're addressing all of those concerns and talking about every student and how they've done. So every student will be discussed, will be, um, you know, identifying those students that need extra help. So, um, that's going on right now. Um, we are continuing professional development this year in literacy in grades K through five. And as I mentioned before, we're having a shift also for, um, you know, around supporting students who are at risk for dyslexia. So that's already underway and happening, but also, um, supporting teachers in knowing how to intervene for students who need extra help. Um, we are purchasing new intervention materials to support struggling readers, um, in K to five as well. And in grades six through eight, um, we implemented a liter-, literacy universal screening back in September. Eye Ready, you may have heard that, um, about that program. So we provided some professional development for our staff to really understand how to interpret the results of that and look at where, what the students' needs are based on that. And we're working, so, so teachers are able to then develop, um, um, lessons and activities to help support students who need it. So we're focusing on that at the middle school. And at the middle school and high school, we will be providing MCAS prep sessions, um, in ELA. You'll see this on all the slides for content area as well. The, so basically we were, were, um, looking at providing, um, support prior to the next MCAS, um, assessments. We've already posted for it at the high school for a teacher that is interested in possibly running that session for the upcoming makeup test here at the high school. We'll be launching this closer to the administration of the ELA and math, um, for the regular cycle as well. And having support groups available for students. In addition to that, at the middle school, we are developing, hoping to have it up and running by November, some academic support after school. Um, and we're working on that right now to create, um, academic support sessions for students by grade level that they can come and get additional, um, support around different content area that they need help. And at the high school, we have that system in place for, at the, um, after school already. So we're looking to really make sure we have it well-staffed and well-socialized. So people know that that's an option available for students to attend to get specific support, um, in any different topic after school. For mathematics, um, as I mentioned earlier, we updated our program to the newer, that's the 2020 edition of the program. So it is now fully aligned to the Massachusetts standards for grades K to eight. Um, we've implemented a new math universal screening and diagnostic assessment for grades K to five. We didn't have a, um, a universal screening tool for math at the elementary grades. So we went with the, the tool that is actually, um, part of our math, Envision's math program. So it's completely aligned and gives us great feedback about students and, um, suggestions for specific interventions. So it's, it's, um, we've been, that's what we've been analyzing over the last, um, two days so far, looking at grades four and five to make some decisions around that. Again, those universal screening progress meetings, um, we're focusing on math as well during that time. Uh, we hired tutors to provide math interventions. So those, um, tutors are part of these discussions and these meetings we're having to help develop the plans. So we're doing that right now for grades K to five. Uh, we reinstated the K to five STEM coordinator position that went unfilled, um, with a resignation during the pandemic. So very happy to have Michelle Leveque in that position and she's doing a fantastic job helping to lead and facilitate, um, some of the data meetings that we're doing, um, among other things. And we are also purchasing new resources for math interventions as well to make sure that, um, when we've identified areas that kids need support, we have the resources to be able to, um, provide those interventions. And can, we, we've done some and we're planning some professional development. Michelle has run some PD already around the new math assessments and updates to the new model, uh, the new math curriculum. Um, she's working with these, uh, the Gen Ed tutors to provide training on providing effective intervention to students. Um, and something that we want to try, it was on the, in the plans a couple of years ago and got set aside, but really want to do some more, uh, to bring some professional development into the district around math workshop. Um, it's actually a really effective way to be able to create the opportunity to have time to provide interventions for students as students are able to, um, move around to different, um, areas in the workshop model. At the high school, again, we are going to be focusing on, um, MCAS prep at the middle school and high school, I should say, for recommended students, but again, um, open to any student who's interested if we have spots. And, um, the, again, the after-school program will support math, um, at both middle school and high school. And for science and tech and engineering, um, so I, I think, you know, I've mentioned it before, but in-person learning, I think is just so critical to have our students back in person, able to do hands-on experiments, really to be engaged with the content. So that alone is a huge plus, having that opportunity. So I think we'll see growth just in that alone. We are, um, we are, in 2021, this is actually our first full year of implementation for our new K to five science curriculum. Um, we've had it for a couple of years, but the first year was, um, teachers were just exploring it. It wasn't a full implementation and we were starting to begin to get PD. Then we, the, you know, the, the next year, we tried to, we started to roll it out, but the, the year did not, um, finish well, as you all know. And this past year, teachers were using it, but, um, we were really supplementing it with, um, um, a product called Generation Genius, which are science videos that are aligned to the different science standards that are high-interest and engaging. So I'm really grateful that we were able to purchase those last year because I think that really helped. Even though it wasn't hands-on science, it helped our students. We were able to, um, keep that subscription for this year as well. So we do, um, have Generation Genius as well again this year. Um, we're hoping to, as the year gets underway, um, once we get things settled, is to really develop some new STEM initiatives and activities for grades K to five, really to promote that, um, engagement. So, you know, we have a K to five STEM coordinator, but we don't have a lot going on right now that is truly STEM. We have lots of math and lots of science, but we don't necessarily have, um, STEM initiatives. So we're, we're talking in the planning phases about how we can really, um, add more STEM opportunities for our students at the elementary grades. At the high school, we're going to offer science MCAS prep as well. Um, and the same thing with the academic support in science for both the middle school and high school. So, um, MCAS prep, um, for science at the high school. So those are the, the big initiatives of what we are focusing on right now. Um, and all of these, almost all of these things are already underway. We're already working through them, uh, aside from a couple of things that are things that we're planning for PD later on. But that's really what we're targeting to help move us forward. We have access to, you know, the data that I shared with you this evening is surface level, um, but we have access into the, into Edwin through the Department of Education where we can really dig deep. We can look at specific student scores over time. But I also feel like we have a really good picture, um, with the amount of assessment that we've been doing this fall and the universal screening to really get a good picture of our students, um, with data points. But also, um, you know, it's been really, it was really exciting for me today to spend the day with teachers, listening to them talk about their students and knowing, uh, listening to how much they already know about their student strengths and weaknesses and really being able to talk about, you know, that data, um, you know, what they're, what they see evidenced, you know, every day in their classroom. So it's been, it's been exciting to be able to have this level of conversation. So. So I'm happy to take any questions, committee might have.
Thank you. Questions? Mrs. Burns?
So I, I really have to say, um, that it's a bit of a tricky, sticky wicket to compare even 2019 results with that of 2021, even within its abbreviated form. Because I just think there's just so many variables in it. And, and especially in looking back, and this is just how my mind processes, and it may not be an accurate way of looking at the data, but when I was looking at, uh, the seventh grade, uh, ELA and math, I, you know, they were fifth graders in 2019. And seeing that, um, concerns me because I know the impact. We all know the impact of the pandemic and the, um, variations of. We all know the impact of the pandemic and the variations of teaching and learning. And what that, what that, you know, what, it's really a snapshot from last year. I don't want, it can't be apples to apples. But in seeing how these students in fifth grade, their scores from 2019 compared to that of 2021, I can't help, and it's maybe because of the format which has been presented and how we look at it, that the gaps are a little larger than just the impact of the pandemic. And I, and I think that's what, I guess, concerns, concerns me more. That, yes, the pandemic certainly did impact.
Sure.
And certainly took away some of these aspects where our students could advance. But in some cases, they, they were, they went further back, and, and I think that's concerning. So, in seeing all the great resources to mitigate this, the extra help, especially after school, which I hope certainly is utilized and, and taken advantage of, as well as professional development. You mentioned earlier too that, I mean, there is a lot of new curriculum that's come in that professional development kind of stalled because of, because of the pandemic, that, especially with new staff, you know, trying to teach something that you're not quite acclimated and that you're, they're executing to the best of the curriculum's ability, you know what I mean? Having that skillset but not learning the best ways, the best ways to communicate to students. I, I hope that there's something, and I, I'm sure there is support along the way for the, for these staff members to try to ensure that with the delivering, you know, they're getting up to speed and not waiting for the next
Sure.
PD event to occur. So, I, I think having that, that extra support, whether it be through our administrators or peer mentors, for them to go to and, and work together and collaborate, which is another big thing that we, that we want to see, that we've always wanted to see. And I think this is a great opportunity to do so and support one another. I'd, I'd like to see, ensure more of that is occurring. And I know time has always been our enemy between, in, in, you know, class learning and then class prep and, and all that stuff. So, I just, you know, and I'm sure you have it on your radar, I just, those little differences between cohorts as they progress, you know, are, you know, and I noticed similarly, in the, the sixth graders who were, so, so the seventh grade and the fifth grade and the, in the sixth grade who are fourth graders, knowing that that too is another transition because of the expectations of middle school and how lessons might be delivered could also impact what we're seeing. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that. I think MCAS in general, even in the best of times, is a snapshot of what our students truly know and what they can truly expedite. And so, we'll be talking later, the, the conference resolutions coming before MASE membership, and there's a resolution that kind of speaks to that piece of assessment. So, I'd be interested in your input when we get to that point.
Sure. And just to respond to some of what you said, the, so I agree. I think we certainly have work to do to look at, you know, when you see a strong cohort of students and then they start to see that decline, to really look at what's going on programmatically to make sure that we're providing everything we can and the most support we can. So, that's definitely underway. As far as supporting teachers who are new coming in, we do have a, a strong mentor program, which I think is definitely helpful. However, one of the needs that has emerged and that we've been working on as the professional development committee has been working on is trying to find ways to get some of that content delivery to teachers without having to wait for a full PD day. So, we're putting together a series of workshops that will be led by the in-house experts we have in-house, who, they'll be short, one-hour workshops after school. The teachers can, you know, either attend in person or virtually, however we provide them, that will be very targeted to specific aspects of our curriculum or programming. You know, walking around, you see there are teachers who have an amazing skillset or knowledge in a particular area. They don't think they do. They think everybody does the same thing. But when you're able to sort of be that thread that weaves in and out of classrooms, you're able to see what, some of these amazing things that are happening. So, we're hoping to really tap into some of that expertise in-house and do these opportunities for staff to just learn a little bit more about how they're delivering content, how are they differentiating instruction in math or... So, we're, we're starting to launch that. We sent a survey out today to staff to get some feedback around what they want more information on or what they feel they need, as well as seeking out staff who might be willing to run some workshops. So, we are, we're definitely trying to, to build some more capacity and share our own in-house expertise, so.
Great. Oh, that's good information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Smahan?
Thank you for that presentation. It's some, some really good information. I just, I want to just throw a note of caution out there for the committee and anybody who happens to be watching at, at home as well, is, is MCAS, while it's an important piece of information, it's one piece of information. It's one data point. And I don't want us to think that, that score or those scores are the barometer of whether or not the pandemic has impacted student learning. You know, I think that there's so many different things. And when I look at that list of all of those interventions at the end of the presentation, and I'm like, there is so much happening and there are so many good things, looking at these universal screenings, these intervention plans, all of this stuff. And it's not generated, you know, like you said, it's not, ooh, we saw this, these bad scores or these not-so-good scores, and now we want to do these, you know, do X, Y, and Z. It's like this stuff was already, was already happening. You know, and I think if you think about the social-emotional wellbeing stuff that we're doing as well, I mean, that stuff truly impacts student performance. So, I just want to sort of just caution, anytime we're sort of saying, was this, you know, like, 10th grade scores were good, oh, I guess the pandemic didn't impact, you know, this year's 11th graders. Like, I, I don't think that we should be thinking about that. And we don't necessarily, you know, have a full picture until we go through all of these interventions and all these other things that are happening. So, I just, that's just my, to just throw it out there that there's, if, if we think that the, that MCAS scores are the only thing, are the only thing that's going to measure whether or not kids have been impacted by the pandemic or how much their learning has been impacted by the pandemic, we're going to go astray. So, even with good scores, we still need to be concerned.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mr. Raxdale?
I want to start just by mentioning a few things that I think may help people kind of interpret what, what we're seeing and also parents on their individual parent guardian reports, which have arrived this, this past week. One, we didn't talk about student growth percentiles, but one thing to be aware of is that they are being calculated differently this year, that the way that the percentiles are generally calculated is you look at people who scored very similarly the previous year, in this case, two years ago, and then say, well, how did they all do this year? And so, you look at one individual person, you say, how do they compare to their academic peers? People who scored the same that they did in the previous time. Did they do better? Did they do worse? Where does it fit on kind of a zero to 100 scale? This year, it was decided that that didn't make a lot of sense because the overall score decrease was such that you could have, you know, one of your academic peers decreased by 10%, and then you went down 5%, but comparatively, it was really good, so you get high growth. And it was determined that it would just be weird, really weird to assign people high growth and give them high-growth percentiles when they actually decreased in their, you know, in what they were able to, to show in the, in the actual scores. So, basically, growth is a lot lower this year. It was calculated in a different way from a different baseline. And so, when you, when you see relatively low growth on, on a lot of different, on a lot of different subjects and so forth, that's part of what's happening, is that it's to more realistically reflect that there was some, you know, regression from the previous scores. Another thing I want to mention in grade 10 is to remind people that the, that high school students are still working under an interim CD standard, meaning that the, you know, to get your CD, the graduation requirement, hasn't been reset for the new next-generation scale. So, for example, 82% of our 10th graders met or exceed expectations in grade 10. 65% met or exceeded expectations for math. Sorry, 82% was for ELI. But a much higher percentage of those people have met the CD standard and have taken care of their graduation requirement. We don't have 30, you know, 35% of last-year sophomores who still need to cross that threshold. So, and that, that standard was just extended for another two years. So, that's going to be with us for, for a little while. I think that some of the, I mean, some of these decreases are definitely concerning. Looking at the, you know, the grade four math, a year-over-year decrease from 68% meeting and exceeding to 42% is a pretty substantial, a pretty substantial decrease. I think the grade six math, especially over the four-year period, that four years ago, 69% were meeting and exceeding, and 41% are now. And, and the middle school scores in general, I think we need to look at a little bit more carefully. One thing that I, one thing I noted is that the majority of the interventions that we have going forward in, especially in math, are at the K-5 level. But that's where the new curriculum has been aligned, that's where, you know, we're hiring tutors. We now have the K-5 STEM coordinator back in place. And there's not a lot of intervention in math at the secondary level. You know, some talk about, about after-school tutoring. And I think that that is something that we need to, to look at, to look at more carefully because I think some of those grades looking through from, from six through eight are, are concerning to me. MCAS is, of course, not the be-all and end-all. There are a million important things that cannot be measured by standardized tests and are not measured by MCAS, but it measures certain foundational academic skills that are still important and, and needs, and needs our attention. The last thing I want to mention is that for some of the secondary interventions, MCAS prep was mentioned, so prep sessions for, for students, recommended students, and then others who want to join. And I would hope that, it makes sense, of course, to give people exposure to MCAS before they take the test. So, everyone, no matter what, every year should, you know, take a practice test, refamiliarize yourself with the format of the test before taking it for real. But I hope that this would be relatively limited because I think that taking people out of like true curriculum to, you know, for MCAS preparation is kind of just like missing why, you know, why we're doing MCAS in the first place, to measure people against the standards. If we're teaching to the standards and teaching the curriculum, then, you know, the MCAS kind of takes care of itself as long as people more or less, you know, know what they're, you know, know what they're doing on the, on the computer. So, I, I don't object to that being offered, but I, I hope that this is a relatively limited and not something, that it's limited and not taking up a lot of, a lot of time.
It's, so it's out-of-school hours, and it's, it's, so it's beyond the content that they're getting in the day. And it's, the content for academic support is really more content-driven. Certainly, as working on MCAS prep, you're focusing on content as well in order to, to go through that. But, but yes, you're right, there's also test-taking skills and things that are involved in that as well. But, point well taken.
Melissa, Melissa, you there? Just some questions.
Yes, thank you, Jen. I really appreciate what David was just highlighting. In looking at this data, I, I share a similar concern to David around the middle school scores. And just as a point of clarification, Ms. Elliott, when your slides indicate the grade level, that reflects the grade that my student, let's say, was in last year.
Correct.
Okay. I think, I want parents to really understand that. So, I agree that a lot of the supports that we're sort of identifying are at the K to five level in math in particular. It raises a couple of questions for me around some of the other remedial efforts. Specifically, can you speak at all to your understanding as to the reason that academic support is really not currently already available for students at the middle school level, whereas it is already in place and rolling at the high school? Is that just not a common practice for the middle school teachers?
So, honestly, I don't know the history behind that. But, you know, that was actually uncovered through my conversations around, let's make sure we're providing additional academic support. So, I'm, I'm not, I can look into that, but I'm not sure of the history behind why it's at the high school and not at the middle school currently. I mean, I know teachers are available to support kids when needed, but it's a more formal option at the high school.
Yeah, and I think at the, at the middle school, my understanding as a parent of a middle school, we have, you know, kids have to make an appointment and schedule it ahead, and I think that's just a barrier and an obstacle. So, I really appreciate that you're looking into, you know, having this academic support just be more of a, an in-place thing that is just always available. So, I think that's important. And the other question I had was, there was mention of tutor support for math at the K to five level. How do parents access tutor support?
Okay, so just to clarify, that term that we're using for the staff members we just recently hired are technically, per contract, they're general ed tutors. These are the folks, so it's not technically tutoring, but that's just their, the title from the contract. These are the folks that are being, are working, so we're identifying students through all of our universal screening and assessment. We're identifying students who need additional support in class to, in addition to their math content, that they need to have a little extra support, just like we've offered reading support at the elementary level for years. So, these folks are the, the people that will be providing that level of intervention to the students in grades K to five. So, that was part of the grant funding that we, that we hired five additional general ed tutors this year. So, they'll be assigned, well, students will be assigned to them. When students are identified, once we go through all the, the data meetings, if, if a student is identified as one who needs support from one of our math tutors, then the parents will be notified with a phone call home, a permission slip will follow, just like we would do with reading support.
Okay, great. And, gosh, I lost my train of thought, but that's helpful to know. And so, the support would happen during the school today, though.
Correct.
For example, would one of these Gen Ed tutors would push into the classroom and be present during a math lesson, almost as like an educational assistance, sort of, but?
Possibly, but for, in some cases, they may pull students from a couple of fourth-grade classrooms to a separate setting to provide intervention on concepts that the students are struggling on. So, they would not miss their regular math instruction, but the part of the math lesson where the students would normally have independent practice, we, we might pull them and provide an extra lesson for them that's directed with the teacher with guided support as opposed to, you know, so, so that they're not missing core instruction, that what we're providing is supplemental, not supplanting what they're already getting. So, it's a double dip.
Okay. And, but that's not happening for six through eight?
At six through eight, there's a math lab, I believe, where they have a system in place that students who are identified as needing additional math support go to the math lab. So, that system, I, I, from what I can gather, is well-used, and I, I don't know all the details about that yet, but I do know that that's established and in place, and they'll, you know, continue to be doing that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Melissa. Other questions or comments? I just have a couple then. I would love, I won't ask any specific questions about this now, but I'd love to see a complete overview of the literacy data that we've completed and collected at the elementary, middle school level in a future meeting. So, I would love to see more of those diagnostic pieces, like how are we, what graphing are we using? How are we shading, sort of, who's meeting grade level, who's getting closer to grade? I would just love to see some of that data at some point, if possible. And I'd also love to know what intervention materials we're using, both in literacy and math. I mean, not a full report, but I would just love to know what's being used. My other question is about Eye Ready and how the results are being communicated to families. Are they being communicated to families?
I don't know that. I think, I mean, in a universal screening, that's usually not necessarily, you know, reports that are necessarily sent out to families. At the elementary level, the practice is that that's shared at parent conference if parents want to know that information, but it's really used to inform instruction. I, so I don't believe that it's been sent out, but I know that teachers are using that data. I have, I know some teachers are setting their educator evaluation goals around that data to work towards helping improve scores for students. So, and they'll be using that, doing the screening, I believe, three times a year. So, we'll continue to do that and monitor students' progress as we go. So, I can certainly get more information around the plans with that. I knew I helped Jeanette launch that for the start. I knew, I helped Jeanette launch that for the start of the school year, uh, Dr. Quirk with her team, um, and we'll continue to meet and refine that process going forward, so.
Great, thank you. I'm happy, so happy to hear about the tutors, the math tutors, um, at that level. I think that's been something that we've been needing for, for a pretty long time. Um, how, so I, when it's provided to the students, I understand that. Um, I guess my next question, and we don't have to answer this now, but is it individualized or is it sort of like a, they're using a program, are they really looking at, ooh, this child really is struggling in geometry? So I'm actually just going to focus on that. Like I, we're pulling kid, I mean, this intervention's happening and they're being pulled from content, but it's not super individualized to what they need, it could just be sort of giving them what they already have. So I guess it's sort of like, what does that, what does that look like? And you don't have to answer it now, but I would just love to...
Sure, I, I mean, I can speak to it briefly, um, because we just spent the entire day talking specifically about that and writing, uh, we have, through the new assessment tool we have, we have a universal screening and a diagnostic assessment for students in math for grades K to five, and the diagnostic assessment, the universal screening shows us the prior grade standards and what they excelled in, what they met, what they still need, are approaching in, what they didn't meet, so we know how to backfill for them before they launch into the next content area. So before, you know, we're able, and we're able to sort of trace back through the program to find, um, specific interventions that are recommended for that student from the program. So we, the diagnostic report, um, gives us even more in-depth information, and literally you can click on a hyperlink when a student is weak in a specific, um, math standard or math, um, you know, strand, and it'll bring you right back to an intervention lesson and activity for the student to complete. So we, in, in the updated version of our math program has, um, at, at the beginning of every lesson, has suggestions for tier one, tier two, and tier three instruction. So, um, we really spent some time today talking with teachers about accessing those materials to make sure that it is really, um, supporting with those students in specifically what they need. We are trying to group students in either, um, in small groups that are based on similar need, that have similar needs, so that it's not just ti, uh, extra time with somebody else talking about math, but it is targeted for their instruction. So that's our ideal goal, is to really hone in. We'll be doing progress monitoring on all of our students as well, and we will do eight-week, our first intervention cycle is eight weeks. We will come back, we'll do progress meetings to talk about the growth that the students are making. Um, we will change up intervention if they're not making effective growth, so maybe it's changing the, um, the materials, the interventions, the frequency, the duration, the student group size, whatever it might be, we'll make some changes, and then we will, um, continue on if need be. And, and we're also hopeful that we'll have successes and be able to release students back into just tier one, um, and that they'll be successful. So that's our goal.
That's great. I mean, sometimes it is just filling in those gaps, right? It's just like, ooh, let's get right here, but if we keep letting it go and then go...
You need math fact fluency, or you need to target something specific. Yeah, absolutely.
So that's great, that's fantastic, I'm so happy to hear that.
Yeah, we're excited about it.
And will something similar, I know people have mentioned this a few times, at the middle school, where it's that level of, we're really diagnosing, and then we're saying, okay, here's, I mean, what do you, I guess, predict, or what do you envision will happen at that level, at some point?
Um, so, I mean, I would love to see, uh, continued, so one of the things that actually came up is the, with the iReady focusing on the literacy, iReady also has a math component. So the question was, will we, will be, will we be doing this with math moving forward? Um, so, uh, you know, we're launching with this with the ELA at the middle school, but I could see that that might be a next best step to, so the, the middle school program also uses, um, the same math program that we use K-to-five. So this year, in, um, by them using iReady at the middle school for the literacy and us trying out the Savis Math, uh, Universal Screener, we were trying to decide which one of them might be the best fit for the middle school, but I can see us moving forward with either one of those, either expanding the screener from envisioned to seventh and eighth, uh, six, seven, and eight, or moving with iReady. So that's one of the conversations that Dr. Quirk and I are having now, what might make sense, but we, I think it does make sense to bring that level of data collection into the middle school as well.
That's helpful, thanks. I, I mean, iReady, I would just like, I don't actually, I was able to see some of it last year, they actually had used some of it at the middle school, and we were at home, obviously, so much, I was able to get pieces of it. I am curious to know if there is, if it's sort of leveled at all, or is a child just taking it, and if they're really frustrated, they just have to keep getting through it, or does it stop them? I would just love to have more information on that.
Yeah, I can, I can get some more.
I was reading a little bit about it, it's not something I'm familiar with, so I was just like, oh, that's interesting to see what, is it really diagnosing, or is it just sort of cutting them off? I don't know, I'm just curious about that. All right, sorry, any other?
You could talk about this all day.
We're just having, I'm sorry. All right, any other questions or comments on MCAS? All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I did want to say one more thing, actually, just to, um, in reference to MJ and David's comment about the cohorts.
Mm-hmm.
So what I was trying to do, as I was looking through, was like, okay, wait, where was this kid?
Right.
And that would be helpful, I think, at some point, maybe not with this particular day, but it would, I was really going back and thinking, wait, where were they in 2017? Okay, wait, where? Like, that's what I'm really interested in, like, how did this child grow or not grow from when we had them in fourth to when they got to six? So I do think that would be helpful.
Yeah, there's a lot of slides to do that, and I would be happy to prepare them for you. No, but I think, uh, that's a really good point, and I do think there is, uh, there's definitely something you can glean from looking at cohorts traveling over time. Um, but what, what happens there is really, you're looking at programming, you're looking at structures, you're looking at that, because that's what's impacting, you know, a specific cohort could be strong one year and not as strong the next year, a different one, but, um, it's really looking at the systems in play, we have in place, so that, um, regardless of the cohort, we're doing everything we can to support them, but...
I understand, thank you. All right, that brings us to item D, which is MSBA updates.
Sure, the, the, the final two items tonight, uh, there are some accompanying documents in the, uh, in your packet, but just very briefly, and these are for information only. Uh, so, uh, work continues and has continued in the background around MSBA, and as we talked about before, um, and of course for members of our community just tuning in, Mass School Building Authority, and our, um, our engagement with them, uh, with the Wildwood School. And, uh, as we've committed to before, we'll make sure that, uh, anything from a document submission standpoint or any other activity is, uh, updated to this committee, um, and so this is the purpose for these couple of items now. This, these reflect, uh, a couple of documents that very just recent, just recently we submitted to MSBA, uh, thanks to a tremendous amount of work by Paul, uh, as well as George Hooper, and, um, uh, and the support of Jeff Hall and Brian Perry at the town. And so these, these items here are just, again, for informational purposes, we had to provide information around enrollment, you'll see that captured in the information. Uh, also, uh, more specific questions related to, uh, enrollment in grade span, and also an educational profile questionnaire. And, and this is very, very high-level, we'll talk about it as sort of a forty-thousand-foot, not even a twenty-thousand-foot view of, of what, uh, if, as we continue down this process, what idealistically the education program would look like in a new building. Um, uh, there will be a much, much deeper dive, uh, in time around specifically, how would we go about programming, how would we go about using space, uh, what spaces do we need, and so on. So this is very high-level, uh, but I'm here for your information only. Two final things just related to this, number one, we are in the process of building out the, um, a portion of our website, uh, to make all of this related information available to the community, uh, who, and so that will be up in the next couple of days, I would anticipate. Um, and then, uh, next Monday, uh, the first, uh, meeting of the Wildwood School Building Committee, uh, is the, the name of the, uh, and that group representative of a cross-section of stakeholders, uh, will be meeting, uh, just to get up to speed to, related to the activity to date, and then the activity that's still to come in the near-term future. Um, the committee won't meet, I wouldn't imagine, all that often, not even necessarily monthly. Uh, we're not at that pace yet, um, but it's sort of ramping up, um, and charting the course for where we're headed. Uh, I'll pause there if there are any questions around MSBA.
Thank you.
Okay. And finally, uh, unrelated to, to that, but the last item tonight, um, uh, there's a copy of a, a recent communication that, um, Ms. Peters, who's here this evening, you'll hear from her in just a few moments, and Ms. Musio, uh, Director of Athletics, and I put together. Uh, we wanted to seize the opportunity of starting, if you will, not just the new school year, but also, of course, a new, a new, uh, a new school year filled with three, three athletic seasons to come, uh, which is a great place to be. There were a couple of incidents early off, right out of the gate, so to speak, that caused us a little bit of concern, and we thought, you know, collectively, there's no better time than the beginning, uh, to try and put some stakes in the ground around expectations that, uh, we hope can be supportive and ultimately embraced by all in our community around, um, respectful competition. And so there's a copy of that document there that has been socialized in different ways, um, and certainly, uh, we think collectively will hopefully serve us well, uh, for both our student athletes, um, our coaches, uh, our officials, um, and our families, uh, as whole. So, um, that's there just as a reference. And, uh, unless there are any questions, that concludes another lengthy superintendent's report.
This is becoming the new, uh, the new normal. David?
I have a quick question. So the, the memo says that, um, see the pre-game sports manager statement, that will be read at the beginning of every athletic event moving forward. It seems like a lot of reading, that we have a lot of teams playing a lot of games, and I just wanted to make sure, like, is that, am I, you know, is, am I interpreting that correctly, that at the beginning of, oh, maybe let's just say home games, I don't know if we're going to read that, probably on away games, but at every athletic event, home game for high school, all the high school teams, that there's going to be sort of an official reading of this statement? I mean, it's easy enough to see at like a football game, that it could just be announced over the PA system, but I'm a little curious how this would work at, at other sports.
I want to put you in the spot, Ms. Peters, but I, yes, I am, but if you want to go and talk to her.
They do make a statement now, and it's just about as long as that one. That one's just a little more specific, uh, and it's a little stronger, I think, but they do make a statement at every game, even now. So I think the expectation is that they continue to do that, but that's a statement they would like to use.
Go ahead, thanks.
Thank you.
Continue on?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay.
And then I'm going to actually, I don't know if it's okay with the committee, I'm going to invite Ms. Peters after the school council, which is...
Do you want to take that in order?
No, I think it's okay.
Okay.
Ms. Peters, you'll be next, I'm just letting you know, it's coming.
Just warming up. Um, just, uh, very briefly, under old business, school council memo, this is a follow-up, uh, you'll recall, uh, to an item that we talked about here previously, uh, and just, really, this is just to try and enclose the loop. Uh, you may recall that, uh, my proposal or recommendation shifted slightly, the, uh, the timeline for the school improvement planning, uh, and, uh, not to go revisit that completely, but, um, in short, what did come out of that last meeting is a suggestion or recommendation that perhaps some policy language, or the policy be adjusted or revised to, uh, to support or to, to align with that recommendation. Anyway, in short, after, uh, the, the subcommittee met, uh, and took a, a more closer look at the language in the policy, it was felt like there wasn't necessary, a necessary change to the language that exists in the relevant policies for that, and so it's a longer way of saying, we're going to hold steady with the policies, um, and, uh, and move forward with the, the dates, um, as suggested last time I hear. And so that brings us to new business.
Thank you. We did meet, the subcommittee did meet, and we decided that there was nothing to do, actually, so it's a pretty quick meeting, and those dates are there for your information. Um, all right.
We didn't want to change the policy and then have to come back later and change it again.
So basically, we just were like, oh, we just want to change the dates for this year because of COVID, okay, we can, like, so we're just basically doing that for now. Um, okay, so actually, why don't we, we're going to, um, skip over A and B for the time being, and go right to C, which is Ms. Peters and the WHS summary. You're up, you can come sit up here with us, please. Thank you for being here, sorry, we're a little off our time stamps.
No, that's okay. Thank you for having me. Thank you for these parts.
You're welcome.
So I, this is a brief presentation, and it's just an update on our work, uh, that we have done over the summer, and the work that we are continuing to do on the vision of the graduate. Um, we, I did come in June to, um, inform you of the mindsets that we determined and of the outcomes that were associated with each of the mindsets. Um, since then, uh, we worked probably from March, April, and May last year to work towards a graphic, which, um, Ms. Fiddler did for us, that you can see, um, that is, um, informing the, um, vision of the graduate with the mindsets. Uh, we also have a brochure, we have some posters that we have in classrooms and around the building, um, that informs, uh, everyone of those mindsets and also of the outcomes. Um, right now, we are planning, our plan for year one is really to make students aware and staff aware of the mindsets and the outcomes, so that this vision is embedded in our culture before we actually, uh, do some implementing of the vision. So our plan is, how do we achieve this vision? So what we've been doing is doing presentations, uh, during our, uh, twenty-minute segments of our W-two block. Um, some of them are virtual, some of them are in-person. Uh, I worked with the freshmen in-person during September, um, I'm working with the sophomores, um, but I've only had one meeting with the sophomores so far in October, um, just due to some, you know, rearranging of things. Um, we had freshman class elections during that time, so we had to rearrange some of the, the, um, virtual and, uh, in-person sessions, but we are doing workshops. Uh, they're short workshops, um, they're, how do we become a learn of the presentation is based on one focus, uh, one mindset, uh, one outcome, and then we look at suggestions, um, that students and staff have put together, um, to help students understand how they can actually meet this vision, when it's time for them to actually submit evidence, and, uh, those are things we're still working on. But our presentations are done during W-two, I think you can see, this is just a sample calendar for October, and I've highlighted two of the times when we have done, uh, the workshops. Those are for freshmen, this is a Class of Twenty-Twenty-Five calendar. We have in-person sessions for some, but most of them are virtual for now. So a, so, uh, a, a sample presentation, we take a mindset, for example, learner, we take one of the outcomes, there are six outcomes, um, with the learner mindset, one of them is examine multiple solutions. So during our presentation, we talk about how, uh, students can examine multiple solutions, where does it happen in their classes, um, and these, this suggested evidence is from staff and is from students. So we go through those different suggestions, and that's really the, presentation is very short. Um, we have twenty-two presentations, because we actually have twenty-two outcomes, um, over the six mindsets. So we're thinking we're getting into January before we actually complete the presentations, and then we're going to work on, uh, helping students to plan for next year, how are we going to plan for next year, what does it look like in our year-two plan? Uh, we are thinking about portfolios, uh, it's not a hundred percent decided, but we are thinking about portfolios and collecting evidence through a portfolio. Um, we also have to decide on a culminating assessment, and we are looking at a lot of things, and that's what we'll be doing with the staff over the year, is looking at, uh, not only some of the suggested evidence, um, because that may change, and that document, I think, is fluid right now, but how are we going to, um, I guess, create or develop a culminating assessment? So, um, that's our plan moving forward. And we will hopefully connect the vision to our senior exploration project, which is our internship. That's our plan so far.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Questions or comments? Really? I was like, that's so interesting, Mr. Ragsdale and Mrs. Burns.
Uh, I, I love the work that you've been doing, doing so far in the vision of a graduate. I think that this is sort of the best kind of long-term work, where you really just have to, you know, you know, plan it out in stages, and then, you know, you focus on one thing at a time, so you can really dive into it and do it well, and then, you know, move on to the larger piece. Um, so I think that's all, that's all great. Um, at some point, I don't know, um, if we're, if we want to keep talking specifically about the vision of the graduate, I'll stop for a second now. I would like to talk a little bit about the overall, uh, review of graduation requirements and program of studies, um...
Certainly, I can just shift to that if we...
Uh, but, uh, but, uh, but I'll just stop there for the, as far as the vision of a graduate presentation.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns?
I was going to touch upon the same, um, aspects that Mr. Ragsdale beat me to the punchline, which is nice for a change, I'm sure, for everybody. Um, but I, I do, I do like the methodical and flexible, um, approach to this, and the collaborate, and the collaboration, um, with students and staff in creating what, what this could look like and what the outcomes might look, look like, and I just, I love that, that flexibility and that creativity and the imagination that goes into, um, into how can we best show off that learner mindset, and I think this is, that in itself is one of the key pieces of this first-year project. How do we learn to problem solve and to put forth the evidence of which we've learned even from this year one experience, and what to take it into year, year two and all the challenges that presents itself? So I really am quite fascinated and quite intrigued by the process and the development of the vision of the student, and I appreciate you sharing that and bringing it forth.
Any other questions or comments? I just have, I'm curious to know how the students have been responding to this?
Very well, I mean, they're, they're pretty attentive, they know they're short, I, I have a lot of fun when I do it in person. Mr. Miranda has done the virtual ones, and I think they get a kick out of his presentations as well, but it's a lot of fun when they're in person, and you can talk, talk through it and have a little fun with them, so.
And do they understand where this is, so say for like our freshmen, do they understand where this is headed and?
Yeah.
Great, thank you so much. All right, going to move on?
Sure, and I will just, you know, this is closely linked, you'll also see the memo in there from, from Ms. Peters around the NEASK visit, and hopefully you caught that too, that, you know, this is, this is one of those things where so much, so much thanks goes to Ms. Peters, is, you know, trying to navigate all of the respective work and just operating a school right now, and under the continually trying conditions. In the background, there are many a different, there are many different realities that loom large for, for many of our school leaders and, and respective staff, and NEASK accreditation visit is just one of those, and Linda has been working hard with her team over the last number of months to continue to keep pace with what was planned, really at pre-pandemic, right, Linda, in terms of their visit, and so they will be back conducting their more thorough visit, the decennial visit, as it's termed, very shortly, in fact, on November 15th through November 17th, as you can see there, and there'll certainly be a lot, there will be more information to come as the schedule becomes more solidified around when and opportunities for whom to meet with the visiting team. So I think our plan is to share that updated schedule at your next meeting, just so you as a committee have a sense of that. So that's that piece, and then, and then really, although separate from the vision of the graduate and NEASK, in many respects, in the same sort of realm, and that is taking a more thorough and deeper look at the middle, sorry, at the high school, and so in the packet, you will see the memo, sorry, I'm just trying to find it here.
Eight C.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And there is, there is a memo to, to you as a committee that comes from both, both Ms. Peters and I, where we, after considerable discussion, really think that the time is right, and the time is appropriate now to take a look at a more holistic review of a couple of aspects related to the high school. One, the graduation requirements, and two, right alongside that, or under gridding, all of that really, is the program, the program of studies, if you will, the courses of studies here at the, at the high school, and as noted in the memo, to try and put some context to the thinking around this and the timing of this, and I, Ms. Peters, do you want to add any, any further context to that in terms of, from sort of your perspective, and why, why this, you think does make sense now, might be good for the committee to?
Well, we haven't really done any work with looking at graduation requirements since, I think it was 2007 was the last time we changed any of the graduation requirements, and I do think with this, the curriculum team leaders have come forth to ask questions about increasing them or changing them in some way, and this is time for us to look at it. I think we keep up pretty much with our coursework and offering courses, but I also think it's time to look at what other schools are doing, and just kind of looking and seeing if there's something that we feel that our students might actually, you know, benefit from having in our, in our school as part of our program. So I do think it's time to look at it. I've looked at a lot of programs of studies, we are collecting them now so that our staff can work at reviewing all of the programs that we have collected, there's about 28 of them right now, so we're looking at a lot of different schools and what they do. You know, we changed our schedule, I think it was eight years ago, and, you know, as much as I think we like it, that may change too, depending on how we want to focus our program, so I just, I think it's time.
And as noted in the memo, you know, the final piece that's, I suppose, underneath or over top and spans all of this is, how do we, as a, as a school, as the high school, reconcile the, the reality that does certainly exist for us, and that is an alignment of the right level of staffing alongside enrollment? And so certainly, you know, this is, this is, I think by design deliberate at the, at the end of this, because I think we should be starting at, at the final place that we want to get to in terms of what we expect for our students, graduation requirements, and what opportunities do we want for our students, program of studies? And both of those, obviously, as you know, as a committee, does fall to ultimately your approval, as, you know, as per policy, probably for every single school district in the Commonwealth. This piece, though, around enrollment is certainly difficult to escape from, and we feel that collectively, it's also an opportunity to take a look at that, and, and so we think that this can all come together, and can come together again at a time that seems right to do so, and so you can see the, the work plan there, you know, and want to look at this is not just going first to enrollment and staffing, but what is it that we need and want from a programmatic standpoint? What staff do we need to be able to operate or deliver that, and then how do we make alignments from there? You'll see the tentative timeline, and, you know, obviously, this is, could be subject to necessary change, but it's ambitious, but through, again, many conversations that Ms. Peters and I have had, we think that with the assistance of the CTLs, and also more broadly, the staff, and you can see there, a plan to engage the staff on the October 27th CIT day, we think that this can be, we think that we can analyze, although there are a lot of districts at hand, pretty quickly, in terms of how do we align with, how do we can compare, where are there perhaps opportunities for reconsideration of programs, and then wrap all that up together, and then bring that back to you in the, as a committee for consideration in the winter, so you can see the timeline there. And I'll, unless there's anything else, Ms. Peters, that you wanted to add to that?
That's it.
Certainly, take questions if you have any.
Thank you. Have your questions? No, you choose, no kidding, Mr. Exta.
So I did want to talk a little bit about the timeline, and not just the timeline of completing this work, but then the, actually, the broader timeline of when we would potentially put these changes into effect, because I don't think if we're going to, I mean, if we're going to bring this back to the school committee in February, I mean, I'm assuming we're not going to be changing the graduation requirements for this year's class, class of 22, you know, it's what, you don't have to suddenly add a new course.
Surprise.
Go to summer, surprise, you're in summer school to graduate. So, I mean, the following year would be the, I mean, I think the soonest realistically that anything could change, but even that's a little bit dicey, because people, this is a long-term process, you plan out your path to graduation, you know, from, from your freshman year, and you don't just, you know, save everything that you need to get done until, until you're suddenly a senior. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the, maybe it's best to kind of work backwards from that, of like, when are we thinking that any changes or what types of changes would potentially be implemented, and then kind of work backward to, is this something that, that we need to get, I think, so soon? It's, I was surprised that, that we were proposing to bring this back for essentially, you know, school committee vote in February.
I do think there's, there are, it's a multi-year, it will have to be a multi-year plan, but I do think that any change is going to impact what we're already doing. So I, I think, you know, if we make a change, we will have to decide when that change can take place, and what else we'll need to change in our program as we move forward. So I think we have to just figure out what the best, when is the best time for the change to take place? And it can't take place next year, not, not, unless we're just adding a course, just a course offering, if we see that we want to do some course offerings in science that we don't do now, that's different, but if we're making a graduation requirement that's going to impact students, we generally wouldn't do it until our freshman class enters, so it'll be just for that class. So it's a multi-year plan. It would have to be.
And, and, you know, we did try and stress that, and it's a great question, and we did try and stress that in the memo, that this is, anything that comes from this is going to have to be, for so many reasons, looked at over multiple years. But I do think that, you know, depending on the findings and the recommendations, just a hypothetical, if there's a particular area or department that we think we could bolster or should in fact expand, because we found that we may be perhaps out of step with what we, we see in a scan of other high schools, identifying an area for growth or expand, and I can't even give one, because I don't, I don't know, but certainly could be part of a year-long process throughout the course of next year that might engage, or might involve designing new courses, professional development, planning a budget and so on around that, that then, you know, maybe implemented a year and a half out. So the multi-year facet, or the multi-year aspect here is definitely real, and it's definitely something that, you know, I think has to be recognized, that this is not going to be something that's going to change for the fall of next year completely, but steps towards it, and perhaps some that may be more easily implemented, perhaps could come online sooner than later.
So there's two things I'd like to, I guess, more so keep in mind when looking and taking on this task, that, that when we're looking at new programming of sorts, especially with graduation requirements, the nature of that, that programming, I think, trying to keep in mind of, we've always dealt with the transition of losing a lot of our eighth graders to the Shawshank Voke, and I know one of the biggest incoming ninth grade classes was when we opened up this high school. I would like to, keeping that programming in mind, what our students might want to learn, that might attract our students back to the high school in a way, I don't want to say away from the Voke, because I think the Voke is a very, a very useful education, another education, institution of education that I think appeals to many students for multiple reasons that I can certainly understand why, but if we can bolster our program so that we can try to at least increase those eighth graders coming in to our high school and make it enticing to do so, I, I'd like to keep that in the back of one's mind when approaching this task, as well as in looking at programming and what it will take for staffing, and what will it take for resources in order to see this, you know, proposed programming, when you get to that measure, come to light, I think we really need to be mindful too of space, and I think we've run into years past, granted, not yet with the high school per se, that we're dealing with spatial issues to hold certain programming or, or have certain resources. It, it just becomes limited, so I think, not that it's the top of the priority, I think there's a bigger and more important work to do, but that's just one of the impacts to this piece, this work, that can't be forgotten. You know, it's all, it's great to create it and say, okay, we're going to do it, but where do we put it? You know what I mean? What do we have in order to, to execute in the, in the best way possible? So I just thought that I, I know, small little aspects, but just to my two cents, so. Thank you.
Mr. Smaha?
Thank you, and I think, I think the, I think this planning is, is really good, I really like, I like, I like the timeline, and I think that the, it's tentative and subject to change, I think, is the most important part of it. I like the, the idea of using a CIT day to involve the, the staff, I think is a really important piece of this, to, to get, you know, their insights, so I'm happy to see that. The other thing, and it's a little, and it's, and I think it's, I don't know if I'm restating what Mrs. Burns was just saying about, when you look at the numbers of students that are leaving, and you sort of look, it's like they're going to private schools, or they're going to the tech, and the private school numbers go up and down, but if you look at the percentages, you know, like 52% of last year's eighth graders chose to go to the tech over the high school. Now, there's always going to be a percentage of students, I think, that are going to go to the tech, but if that number, that number is continuing to go up, that's going to have impacts on the staffing here, and I think that we really need to be looking at, why are, why are students going to the tech? What are they getting out of that experience that they're not getting, or they don't think that they're going to get out of WHS? So I think, I think exploring, I think that exploration has to be a part of this process, I don't know how exactly you would go about doing that, but I, I think that, that, I mean, it's, it's, these, these are like really big numbers, I mean, it looks like, it looks to me like the number of students just in general, eighth graders, is going down, and if that number is going down, and the percentage going to the tech is going up, you know, I think that that is going to have some real ramifications for, for, for the high school and for, and for our district, so I just want us to be thinking about, you know, if a student is leaving, you know, decides to go to the tech for something like some computer programming web ISSN thing, like, that's something, you know, we might not be able at WHS to offer, you know, electricity or carpentry, but computer web stuff, that might be in the realm of something that we could, we could offer, so I just want to highlight that, that aspect of it.
My personal opinion, I just want to piggyback off that, that, along with enrollment, funding is, is directly tied to enrollment, so that in itself, on top of the mission your task with in creating and reviewing, that is funding for the, for that, to be offered, to offer the programming that we'd, we'd want to, is also tied into, to the number of bodies we, that sit in our desks, and so that is something to be mindful of as well.
Can I jump in? I completely agree, I saw these numbers, and although we knew to see them, I was like, oh my goodness, so I think that, I love the idea, Jay, of figuring out why, and really understanding that, well, what's there that we could offer, that we're not offering? And then I also think somehow tying this work to the work at the middle school, where we're really thinking through not just for the high school, but they're not coming to the high school and then saying, oh, it's not fitting my needs, and leaving, they're not coming to the high school, and so what's happening before they get here, that's making that decision for them, I think that's really something that may not be for you to discover, but for all of us, like, for the people behind, really need to figure that out, because I don't think it's just going to be fixed, because we have a new vision of a graduate, and we have new graduation requirements, right? I also think this is a great opportunity to refresh and really show Wilmington what we do offer at the high school, I think that it's like this, it shouldn't be a hidden gem, but having now been through the system, whether I have, my children have gone through all of it, and now I have one at the high school, and I'm like, oh my goodness, I wish I'd known more of this, that, like, it is such a gem, and there's so much just fantastic teaching, the curriculum is strong, and there's so much happening here, and I'm just not sure that we're highlighting that before people get here, and, and I think we really need to do a better job of that, of really telling our story, so that it's not just they come into the open house and they're like, oh, cool, I didn't know I could, but we want to have our seventh and eighth graders really excited and looking forward to what's going to happen. I think we have the, the new parent group, the PAWS group, actually, Barbodaun is here watching our, our meeting, and they really have been talking a lot about this in those meetings, like, what do we need to know as we're moving from school to school, and what do parents want to know about the incredible offerings? I remember sitting in one of the open houses and taking tons of pictures and sending it out to my neighbors, oh my goodness, did you know they had this? Or sharing with my son some of the cool AP classes he can take when he comes here, I just think we've got to do better, and I think that will make a huge, so I think it's such a great opportunity for us to say, hey, what is actually happening here, and tell that story a little bit better, so. Other, you're writing stuff down, do you have more stuff? Now I get it, I know, I'm watching.
Did you say that 52% of eighth graders were going to the tech? Because that can't.
That's what this chart says.
Fifty-one point nine.
I didn't do the math, it says 51.9% of students leaving, so that actually, I'm sorry, that's not 52% going to the tech, because that includes 15 students going to private schools. So, okay, so I.
So, okay, so I did misspeak with that, but if you were to do the math, I think it's hovering around half, I mean, I can't do the math like that in my head, but.
Me either.
That's, I mean, to me, that's probably hovering around 50%. So I did misspeak when I said that, and I apologize for that.
No, I'm looking at DSE numbers, but I think it's less than that.
I'm looking at the numbers in the memo.
I want to make sure we have the, we want to know exactly the numbers, but, and I don't think any of us are saying that there are going to be these natural changes, where students are choosing techs, or they're choosing privates, or that, I think that's fine, and that's healthy. I think this number is probably not healthy. So that's what we really need to kind of dig into, for lots of reasons, but for us as a school committee, it's so tied to funding, and so we're going to start losing some of these fantastic offerings at the high school if we don't have the number of students to sit in those classes, so.
Well, if I could add, I think one of the things that has kind of come out of this conversation that I think is important, and Jay, to your point, right, we're going to lose students regardless, and we understand that, and, you know, there are going to be a number of kids who go to the tech, say, because they want to be electricians, or learn a trade, and I get that, but what aren't we doing that is preventing kids from staying here? And not to disparage, but especially to the private schools that are offering what I would imagine are pretty similar curriculums, but, so, I agree, I think, I think it's a good conversation, I think it's a good time to be looking at it.
The other thing that I want to add, add to that as well, is, as I know, I'm sort of thinking about the programming aspect of it, but I'm thinking about, which I'm saying about what's happening at the middle school, they're not even getting to the high school, they're making that decision, is I think some of these decisions are made not necessarily because of programming, but is there something else that a student, and this is, there's no disrespect to the tech, I love the tech, I mean, people know that, and connected. But, you know, the, the idea sometimes can be that they're going to the tech for reasons that are other than just the programming, and what are those reasons? So it's not just they're going there because they want to learn a trade, they're going there because X.
They have options. They have options.
But what I'm saying, correct, what I'm saying is, if we see 23, 23, 23, 23% of students leaving, right? Right? So like, that number sort of stays the same, stays the same, and then it balloons over the past, like, say, four years, I guess, 18, 19, who knows what happened, but like, it's sort of like balloons, the number of kids leaving, is, what is it? It could be just programming, but there's, there could be another X factor, and I think that needs to be explored as well.
Mrs. Burns, and then I have a comment from Mrs. Plowman that she may make herself, but go ahead.
So the other thing with tech schools is that their funding is a lot, is different than public, public schools, where we go before our finance committee in the town to get voted, to get voted. They don't ever have to deal with Proposition 2 and 1/2 to get their money. But the other thing is, is what makes tech schools a bigger possibility is, is options in the sense that, you know, you're going, you're going into the last four years of schooling, as we know, and not knowing what you want to do. I don't know how many kids know what they want to do when they even graduate, you know what I mean, they take a good step. So they have an option of going through shops and determining what might be something of interest if they should take up a trade, and it's hands-on learning, or they can, as we've seen tech schools done in the past decade, offer college prep courses to go to the next level. So not knowing which path you want to go on, they have those options. And I think that's really enticing. That funding piece, that funding source, is also, I think, what enhances their programming and their ability to, to do so much, especially since you've got, you know, five feeder districts feeding into it. So I, I think that structure, structure can offer more options, not to say that if you're college-trad and college-bound, as Mrs. Bryson touched upon, what we offer here is not yet, how do we put it, it's not enhanced, it's not promoted as much as I think it should be and it could be, because I think it's, granted, I think life has gotten probably the better of us, just dealing with our day in, day out, that we're not looking at what our public schools in Wilmington do offer, and where our students, I mean, look at the DECA club. They are consistently meeting, you know, championship and national competitions, consistently over the past, I know, the 10 years I've been on this board. And I, I just, I just think those are just some of the variables, and I, I would, I guess respond to your, what that X factor could be. Those might be some of the rationale behind that, so. And thank you, I didn't mean to overstep.
No, no, no. Melissa, you there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm listening and nodding my head and just agreeing that, you know, one of the primary thoughts I'm having about, you know, the percent of students leaving right now, and I agree with what everyone is saying, is just kind of reinforcing our decision as a committee, and Dr. Brand's decision, along with the middle school administration, to just take a look at the middle school programming, and just the culture and the climate there, because I, I think Jay was really honing in on, yeah, it could be the programming, it could be the offering, but it could be something else. And I think it behooves us to really start to figure that out, and to pinpoint that. So I'm just sitting here feeling like everyone's reading my mind, so thank you. That's all I have.
Well, we're here for Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
And I just, I do want, I mean, I don't think this is something that we should, I mean, not that we shouldn't be talking about this, but we shouldn't be guessing what, I mean, and using our own personal experiences, we probably should really collect this data, right, some finding out exactly why, not just, I think it's this, and I think it's that. I mean, I think if we really want to use this data, we need to have a real collection of it, but I think these are really great ideas, and I think this is such an opportunity for us as a district to move forward.
I agree.
Anything else?
No.
Do you have a hand?
I'll just, I'll be quick. That, you know, there are things you can change and things that you can't. And, you know, if people really, really want plumbing and automotive repair, we're not going to offer that, you know, at our high school. And it would be silly to do so, because Wilmington kids already have an opportunity to do that. So focus on what we can do, what we can offer, and what are we not potentially offering that is within our power to, to do, that, you know, could meet their needs, is obviously where our focus should be.
And sports, I just want to sort of throw that out there. I think that there's, I do hear a lot of sports, and I'm going here because I want to play, and so I wonder if that's just something else to sort of throw into the mix as, as the committees start, not us, the committee, but as your committee starts to think through this. But I think that's, really, this is going to stem from collecting data, finding out why people have made the decisions that they've made. Okay. Sorry, moving right along.
Thank you, Ms. Peters.
Ms. Peters, she's like, I had no idea that this was going to turn into this. Sorry. Thank you for being here, we appreciate, always nice to see you, and thank you for these lovely gift bags. We missed the conference room, so this is like, it's like a conference room treat, so we appreciate it. All right, so we'll now, what did I skip over? Oh, just the, just A and B, okay. Mr. O'Dear, that's you.
Thank you. In the packet is the FY '23 budget calendar. It's that time of the year where we're trying to close FY '21. We're in the middle of starting FY '22 and preparing for FY '23, so it's that time of the year again. So budget materials were sent out to all department heads and school leaders over the weekend. Information due back to me, the end of October, we'll have our departmental meetings in November, and a preliminary budget will be presented to the school committee in December. So you have the calendar laid out, it's always subject to change. I will mention, and I think Superintendent Brand sent something out, just as a potential, we might have to add, or move a couple of dates around in January and February, just due to different timing. The town manager's budget presentation timing, as well as the budget hearing, so, but we have some time on that, so.
Thank you. And then you want to move right on? Yeah. Final revolving account report, that's you again.
Yep, so as I just mentioned, we're in the process of closing FY '21, so what you do have in your packet is a final revolving account report for the end of FY '21. And you'll see that all the balances are in the black, as they should be, we set up to be pretty, we're in good shape going forward into FY '22 with revolving accounts. No real surprises, even though revenue was down in some accounts, obviously, due to the pandemic, we control the expenses in these accounts as well, so all of the accounts have a pretty good ending balance, which will help us going forward.
Excellent, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, Mr. Rexton.
I had one, just one question, that I was surprised to see the magnitude of the expense for lost books listed, this is on, what is that, on page 18, that especially at the high school, that it was about $1,200 lost book expenses for the middle school, but over $5,500 at the high school, and.
Let me just pull that up, I'm sorry.
I don't know if that's anomaly this year, because I don't feel like I've noticed that in past revolving.
Ian, you were looking at the ACHO report, or?
Yes.
Okay.
It's page 16, I guess, of the report, but it looks like page 18 of the PDF.
Well, that's the, the, if you look at the revenue and the expense column, there's actually nothing, and, yeah, those are kind of balances.
Right, those are carry forward.
Yeah, carry forward from collecting for lost books in previous years, revolving accounts just roll over from year to year to year to year.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, so last year, actually, the balance was the same amount, $7,124, and the previous year was $7,032, so it's been around that, that era.
Right, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, that brings us to MASC resolutions, and then the MASC delegate to the annual conference. You have a memo in your packet, there are nine resolutions. What we've done in the past is basically vote on them as a, as a group, right? Take it together, unless there's something you'd like to hold for a discussion. And since we do have another meeting before the MASC, what I might do, if it seems like there's going to be a lot of discussion, maybe hold those to our next meeting, if we want to have a deeper conversation about it, and then just vote on the ones that we're comfortable voting on tonight. Does that seem okay with everyone?
Sure, let's see.
See how it goes.
See how many we want to discuss.
Okay, so I'm just going to read the title, I'm just going to, I'm sticking on the memo here, but you have the full resolutions right on the next page, and I believe all of them, except maybe there was one from Framingham? Are they all MASC Board of Directors?
The first one is Framingham.
Yep, I saw that one, and then the rest are MASC Board of Directors.
Yes.
What's a resolution committee?
Resolutions, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, all right.
Framingham, that's not a full year.
So we have, so basically, if you would like to discuss, just please raise your hand and say, I'd like to hold on that, please, I'm not comfortable voting yet. Dedicated funding for school-based clinics and services.
I would like to hold and have a conversation about that, Jen.
Great, thanks, Melissa. Can you just write that down for me? Number one, we're going to hold. Number two, homework gap and Wi-Fi internet access. Number three, IDEA Full Funding Act.
I just have a question.
Sure.
This goes to Paul. Paul, the funding for IDEA, is that tied into the circuit breaker as well?
No.
Does it have a?
No, there's no circuit breaker.
Okay, so it's a, it's a separate funding source?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Number four is recess. Number five, zero tolerance policies.
Hold.
Hold. So we're holding on one and five. Alternative to MCAS. I think I might hold on that. Are you going to hold on that?
No, I'm not going to hold, but I have to make my disclaimer that because of the conflict of interest law and my employment at DSE, that I will not be.
Okay.
Participating in deliberation or voting on that resolution.
Great, okay, I would like to hold on that. So that's one, five, and six. Thank you. School committees and receivership.
I'd like to hold that, hold that.
Okay, number seven.
I would like to hold on that, because I don't understand that.
Okay. Sounds good, we're holding that as well. David also would like to hold on that. Electric school buses. Prohibiting the use of Native American mascots.
I would like to hold on that.
Okay. All right, so we are voting, we are going to move to support the MASC resolutions as presented, four, I, numbers, walk me through it, Mr. Rexton.
Two, three, four, and eight.
Two, three, four, and eight.
Yes.
All right, is there a motion?
Some.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns, a second by Mr. Fenely. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, great. Are you good, Tracy? Okay. Are we, what would you all like to do? Do you want to just start discussing now, or would you like to bring this back next time?
I think we can, if you wanted to trip away at this.
One of them. I think we might as well begin, we can always.
Begin, all right.
If one of them becomes intractable, we can always table it.
Okay.
Did you want to take care of the delegate piece and get that out of the way, so we can just focus on the discussion?
Sure. So we'll skip ahead now to AE, which is the MASC delegate to annual convention selection. Mrs. Burns, are you attending?
I am.
And Mr. Rexton, you are attending?
Yes.
Is anyone else attending?
No.
Okay, all right. Would one of you like to do the delegate?
I move to appoint, Ms. Burns is delegate.
I said, oh, Mr. Fenely seconds. We know you love it, Mrs. Burns. All in favor?
Sure.
We should ask if she accepts.
Oh, do you accept? Of course she accepts.
Already voted.
So as long as we do breakfast day to discuss.
All right, that's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Melissa was one of the ones who wanted to hold on number one. Melissa, do you want to discuss this now, or would you like me to hold it to the next meeting?
I don't care, I'll do whatever.
All right. Okay. So we're going to look at Resolution 1, dedicated funding for school-based clinics and services. I'll read the, therefore be it resolved that MASC support proposals that would establish dedicated funding for school-based physical health and mental health clinics and services. Discussion.
Do you want me to jump in?
Yes, I think you're the one who would like to hold it, so tell, yes, please.
Okay, so as someone who, I have such a close experience with providing mental health support in a school setting, and I think that it's essential to have that kind of support, but I have a real concern that, well, I think that this is like a Band-Aid or a stop-gas solution to a major healthcare crisis in our country. I think that placing the responsibility of these kinds of matters in the hands of educators or within the bounds of educational facilities is not the right solution, and I think it would likely, frankly, slow our progress as a nation at resolving some of these larger issues. That's a very big conversation, I won't get into it, but I don't think that people also sometimes understand the impact on students when you're, when they attend a counseling session in school, and then they're being expected to return to a learning environment. I also don't think that that model for counseling support services for children is adequate, because it doesn't include parent or caregiver inclusion, which is not an effective model for behavioral change or emotional development in children, in my experience. So I think it's a slippery slope, and I have concerns about putting these kinds of responsibilities on the shoulders of educational facilities.
Thank you, Melissa. Mrs. Burns?
Melissa, I have a question. Melissa, I have a question for you.
I know, in that perspective, probably surprises people because I'm such a proponent, right, of social emotional support, but I don't know. This one kind of worries me. Go ahead, MJ.
Well, so, and I think a lot of this is, is built in within the language, and I think the resources, you know, differ between districts, and, and the needs differ between districts. You know, sort of like the Springfields to, and Fall Rivers to towns like Billerica and Wilmington. But my question is, it, the, the language states mental health clinics and services. So I think my perspective on that, and I certainly appreciate, most definitely appreciate the, the perspective that you offer in, in your commentary, which I, you know, I think it's beyond a lot of us who don't walk that path consideration, but it's the, it's the language of services that I think I am most interested in. And I think of services as resources, and to add more funding towards resources, whatever that could look like within, let's say, a district of our proportion. I think that in itself is, is what I'm interested in, and how do you fund these sources? And, and, and I think that's where I'm kind of gravitating towards. Yes, I, I do have to agree with you that, I mean, creating mental health clinics within education, educational institutions it, it is a little, I think, not in the same wheelhouse, so to speak. But I, I do think, though, if, if we, there is a funding source to improve our resources and whether, whatever that may look like, whether it be staffing or bridging to outside resources, you know, appropriate outside resources, capturing those families who are at need, those type of resources. And that type of funding streamlined is, is, I think, how I'm looking at this. The clinic thing, I do agree with, yeah, but I just think there's other services that I think is generally left vague. You know, because...
Yeah, I can totally get on board with, with services and resources, but what really made me go, oh, no, was mental health clinics within schools.
I agree.
I don't think that's, yeah, I just think that on the ground, doing that work is not only hard for staff because where, I'll, you know, I'll just say, like, some of the work that in my consultation services, I very much caution school-based clinicians to be doing any kind of trauma treatment. And when we're talking about more significant mental health issues where students might need to access services through a mental health clinic, that work's not appropriate for a school because it's not, it's not safe or emotionally safe and often therefore becomes physically unsafe to ask kids to do that kind of mental health work and then return to class. And I caution schools to not follow a model like that because it interferes with learning. And I just think that those boundaries are going to get real blurry. But again, I could totally be on board and would whole, wholeheartedly support more funding for mental health support and resources within schools.
Mr. Small.
Well, I, I, from, from a sort of different, I think, perspective to where I think, when we're thinking about this in terms of a town like Wilmington, it's very different, I see this as coming from Framingham, and then working in Boston where we have lots of school-based clinicians, a lot of services that are coming, not from necessarily people that are employed by like Boston Public Schools, but people that work for, you know, Children's Hospital, people that are employed through a lot of these other mental health clinics. I think, and I could be wrong, but I think this is talking about establishing funding to bring some of those people who aren't necessarily school district employees, right, into, into the schools. And a lot of times, in, in my experience, in a lot of more urban districts, like, you know, like, like Boston, is sometimes the, the inclusion of families, families are usually included in that, and a lot of times families will come to the school. A lot of times, the school is the one that can arrange for transportation for families to come into school. Or, you know, the, the, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot going on, I think, in this resolution, and I think that when we take it from the perspective, I don't think this is saying we need to get school-based counselors who are going to do some serious trauma work with a kid for 45 minutes where they pull them out of English class and then drop them in the math class. I don't think that's what this is saying. I think it's talking about more universal sort of services with the school being sort of the, a, a base that maybe the, maybe families are already familiar with at, at some level. So I, I think that there's a lot more to this than what it might read. And I, and I think that this resolution probably has a greater impact on urban districts than suburban districts. And I'm sorry if I'm going on way too long about that, but hopefully that adds a little bit more insight.
Mrs. Burns.
So I would ask a couple of questions of, of the membership. Do, A, would you like clarification further? That we could try to reach out to the Framingham School Committee to find, to get more clarification behind what they're specifically looking for, because I think that oftentimes can change the whole resolution in itself, if, especially if there's a different understanding and everyone's interpretation could be different. B, we also have the ability, or I have the ability, to bring forth an amendment on the floor when this resolution is taken up for consideration for, for the body. So whether it be a deletion maybe of that medical clinic to just prevent any misinterpretation, or if you wanted to add language, just to make sure, to add clarity to the resolution. That's, those are two options that I would like to possibly consider with this because I think it's a, it, it's, again, another funding source of something that we have been striving for, social emotional learning piece and safe support of schools. So I would, I would, maybe for the next meeting, we can bring this up, but I would think that if there's any kind of amendment or editing of this resolution that would make everyone feel comfortable, not that everyone has to agree, but I would at least like to take that opportunity to attempt, because I think this is a good resolution. I, I share, I share the concerns and perspectives only because I don't know what the intent behind the Framingham, the petitioners are, you know what I mean? So...
I, I, yeah, I would support that, MJ. I just think that it has to be really well thought through. And I would love to see language, you know, whereas from input, from school-based clinicians or data within school systems is showing us that, you know, in order to support this. I, you know, I'm surprising myself that I'm, you know, questioning this, but I'm also looking at this as this could, this could really unravel and this could really impact academic learning, you know? We think about just that model of pulling kids out and, you know, and doing that work without having access to parents. And, and I, and I think that we have to work alongside and really in collaboration with families when we are doing child and adolescent-based counseling services. Kids can't just do this counseling in a bubble with a school-based clinician and then go back to their teacher, you know? So the model would have to be really fleshed out.
Okay, well, we're not, you're, we're, that's in the minutia of it, because I think that's, it's different per district. I think what's before us is for MASC to advocate, specifically for funding sources for school-based clinic and services, of which we can change that language as to how it's going to be used. Melissa, I think it's outside of the purview and outside of the intent, it's, it's to advocate, you know, for the funding source. And do you think that maybe you and I can connect and come up with some language? And I, and we can connect with, I, I don't mind running by, and then bring it forth at our next meeting for consideration and vote? Does that sound reasonable?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
And, and any information you want to get from Framingham would be great, too.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so I'm actually going to stop us here.
And if anybody has any additional questions, just, please just email them to me.
We'll bring this back closer and to the top of the meeting at the next time, just so we're a little more fresh as we, as we go through the other ones. So we will put these back into your packet for the end of October, and the ones we did not approve. Okay. All right, subcommittee reports. I see there is a WEF report which you can read. Melissa, do you want to add anything?
Um, no, just as it is, it's fine.
Perfect, thank you. So please make sure you take a look at that. And thank you again for the report. Any other subcommittee reports? We met tonight with the, I'm just going to call them Paws, I'm much parents, guardian advocates for Wilmington schools, to talk about a survey that they would like to send out. And we reviewed the survey questions and went through some of the pieces with them, just trying to get some more information from families. And so we'll actually ask Tracy to send that out next Tuesday. And we're also going to reach out to administrators to see if they'll put it in their, their weekly updates. So look for that, that should be coming your way. Any other subcommittee reports? Okay, correspondence?
Done this evening.
All right, we have our next school committee meeting, October 27th, 7:00 PM. November 4th, virtual community cares event entitled Supporting Youth with Depression During the Pandemic and Beyond. What families, schools, and communities can do, and that will be, that's virtual, I was going to say, where is it? It's virtual. I skipped, I mean, I read it, but I kind of didn't really internalize that. And then November 17th, we have a regular session meeting here in this room. Anything else before we adjourn? All right, is there a motion? Mrs. Burns, second by Mr. Fenely, all in favor?
Melissa?
Melissa?
Yeah, yeah.
Melissa, thank you for joining us by phone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.